Melissa Hunt. Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis. Louis Williams.
Here.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
They're supposed to be here at some point.
Okay, alright, we'll do it later. Item two is a consent docket. Item A, approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two in the amount of three million, three hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifteen cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item three, consider the budgeted purchase of a twenty twenty-three E-one custom fire engine in the amount of five hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars from Chief Fire and Safety Company utilizing the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement, contract zero-two-two-eight-one-eight-dash-E-O-I.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council. Again, I just ask that you would consider the purchase, budgeted purchase of this twenty twenty-three E-one custom pumper from Chief Fire and Safety, utilizing the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract. Right now, these trucks are a year and a half build time, and it's all manufacturers across the board just because accessibility of parts. So, this is something that we are trying to replace, one of two trucks that desperately need to be replaced. And again, we're about a year and a half out to get a truck here in town.
Motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to welcome the group from Leadership Moore for attending tonight. Thank you for your participation. Item four, consider the preliminary plat of Silverleaf Courts located in the northwest quarter of Section thirteen, Township ten North, range three west being south of northeast Twelfth Street and west of Silverleaf Drive, application by Noble R E F L L C. Planning Commission recommended approval eight-zero, Ward one.
Vice Mayor and Council, this site is located south of northeast Twelfth Street and west of Silverleaf Drive. The property is currently zoned R-one as a P U D. The applicant is proposing to develop a single-family residential development approximately, um, uh, three-quarters acre in size, with five dwelling units, resulting in an overall density of six-point-five dwelling units per acre. Public water and sewer are available to serve this site. Because the site is under one acre, stormwater detention for this development is not required. However, there is off-site drainage that may affect this property coming from the Silverleaf Shopping Center to the west. So, drainage plans will be required to be submitted with the final plat, and it will comply with the twenty twenty-one drainage criteria. Access is provided by north Silverleaf Drive. The site was rezoned to R-one as a planned unit development on August second, two thousand twenty-one. In order to complement the surrounding neighborhood, the P U D included the following amenities. Seventy percent masonry on the exterior facade, two-car garages, and personalized landscaping for each lot to include one to two trees for each lot, and four to seven shrubs. The Envision Moore twenty forty plan calls for this location to be community commercial. Land uses allowed in community commercial include a mix of commercial and residential uses. This application was reviewed as to its compliance with the plan. Due to the overall densities of six-point-five dwelling units per acre and the attributes of the proposed development, staff believes this site does conform with the requirements of the community commercial land use designation. And staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Elizabeth, is this in a neighborhood?
Uh, yes, um, off of Twelfth Street. There is a Silverleaf Shopping Center.
Right.
And it's directly behind that shopping center.
Cause I see the rendering, the map, and it looks like there's lots around it. Is it, so it's gonna go in a vacant lot?
Yes.
Okay. And just five lots?
Yes.
Thank you.
And this, this lot's been vacant for a long time.
Yes.
Make a motion to reapprove?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item five, consider the final plat of Grace Point One, a replat of the Grace Point addition located in the northeast quarter of Section sixteen, Township ten North, range three west being south of northwest Twelfth Street and west of Santa Fe Avenue. Application by Grace Point One, L L C Ron Walters. Planning Commission recommended approval eight-zero in Ward two.
This site is located south of northwest Twelfth Street and west of Santa Fe Avenue. The property is currently developed as Grace Point Senior Community. The applicant is proposing to replat two sections of the addition as one lot and block. No additional living units are being proposed with this application. Public water and sewer are available to serve this site. There is FEMA floodplain located on this property, but all appropriate studies and documentation are in place from the original development. There are no modifications to the floodplain being proposed with this replat. The property has three access points to northwest Twelfth Street. There are no new driveways being requested. There is additional right-of-way at Grace Point Drive, was proposed to be dedicated to the public. However, the applicant has decided to maintain ownership and maintenance of this right-of-way. Stormwater detention is provided for this site in the existing detention ponds located on the property. There are various carport structures constructed over platted utility easements. While the city staff does not take adverse action against these encroachments, appropriate documentation will be required to allow free access to the utility easements, such as a whole harmless agreement or revocable permit. And this addition, documentation will be required prior to filing the plat at Cleveland County. The Envision Moore twenty forty plan calls this location to be community commercial. Land uses allowed in community commercial can include a mix of uses up to fifty percent residential development. This application was reviewed to its compliance with the plan. And as this application is not proposing any new living units, staff believes that this application is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I'll make a motion that we would approve the application.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, call for the vote, please.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item six, consider comprehensive plan amendment number five, located in the southeast quarter of Section twenty-three, Township ten North, range three west being north of southeast nineteenth Street and east of Broadway Avenue from regional center to transitional commerce. Application by New Site Construction, L L C Josen Girmit. Planning Commission recommended approval eight-zero, this is Ward one.
Vice Mayor and Council, items number six and seven on your agenda are companion items. This site is located north of southwest nineteenth Street and east of Broadway Avenue. It is adjacent to the B N S F railroad tracks. The property is currently vacant. The applicant is proposing to develop the property for a commercial mini storage facility with access from Broadway Avenue. That's through an approved access easement along the south end of the Central Park. The preliminary plat consists of one lot on eight acres. Public water is available along southwest nineteenth Street and Broadway Avenue to the west of the site. Sewer is available along the west property line of the site. Water must be extended from Broadway to provide adequate water service to the site. There is no FEMA-designated floodplain located on this property. Although the property front southwest nineteenth Street access at this location is considered dangerous, it was not advised by the city's consulting and traffic engineer for access. Instead, the site will be accessed through an approved access easement and drive located along the south end of Central Park, the drive of which has been constructed, is there currently. Stormwater detention is required for the site. With the site being zoned I-two, a rezoning to develop the site as mini storage is not required. However, the site is shown in the comprehensive plan as regional center, which does not support mini storage as a use. Therefore, a change in land use is required from regional center to transitional commerce. Developments within the regional center land use category are typically big-box retailers and other large commercial and service industries that have a, need a high level of visual and vehicular access. The applicant is requesting a change to the Envision Moore twenty forty land use plan to transitional commerce, which is transition, traditionally more of a heavier land use than regional center. With the proposed use of the property being a mini storage and being uniquely located with no access to nineteenth Street, and being behind other buildings that front along Broadway Avenue, staff believes that the transitional commerce land use and the proposed use of a mini storage does meet the intent of the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of the comprehensive plan amendment and the final plat. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item seven, consider the final plat of Broadway Commercial East, located in the southeast quarter of Section twenty-three, Township ten North, range three west, being north of southeast nineteenth Street and east of Broadway Avenue. Application by New Site Construction, L L C Josen Girmit. Planning Commission recommended approval eight-zero, Ward one, this is the companion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. This time, uh, item eight.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, the applicant has advised us that they're gonna be out of town and not able to be here tonight, so they request that this item be tabled until our December sixth council meeting. So, would appreciate a motion to table.
Make a motion to table, item eight.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item is tabled. Item nine, consider adopting resolution number three dash twenty-one, program, programming the widening of southwest nineteenth Street and Santa Fe Avenue intersection as a surface transportation program, urbanized area, S T P dash U Z A project.
Vice Mayor and Council, this, um, resolution will, um, has to do with the widening of the intersection of nineteenth and Santa Fe. We are proposing an intersection with dual left turns and right turn-only lanes where it's feasible. This is to help with a traffic backup that happens, um, every day on that intersection. The project would also include a streetscape and a ten-foot wide trail or sidewalk with, uh, regular sidewalks, six-foot wide sidewalks on the other legs. This project is estimated to cost two-point-three-nine million dollars. The city would be required to have a twenty percent match. The rest would be paid with federal funds. The twenty percent match would be, uh, four, four-hundred-seventy-eight thousand dol, excuse me, four-hundred-seventy-eight thousand dollars. This would be programmed for federal fiscal year twenty twenty-three if approved. We have ran the scoring on this, and it does score quite high, so we have hopes that it would be approved.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item ten, consider adopting resolution number four dash twenty-one, programming the reconstruction and widening of southwest thirty-fourth Street from Little River to South Broadway as a surface transportation program, urbanized area, S T P dash U Z A project.
This project is to widen southwest thirty-fourth Street from two lanes to four lanes, including intersection widenings and signal lights at the eastern and Broadway intersections. A streetscape and ten-foot trailer sidewalks along with regular sidewalks would also be included in this project. The estimated cost is, uh, seven million, eight-hundred-forty-thousand, nine-hundred-eight dollars and eighteen cents. The, again, the city would be required to, to a twenty percent match, with the remaining being funded through federal funds. The twenty percent match would be, uh, one million, five-hundred-sixty-eight-thousand, one-hundred-eighty-one dollars, uh, and sixty-four cents. And again, we are, um, uh, applying for the twenty twenty-three federal funds. This application does not score as high, um, but we're still hopeful.
Make a motion to reapprove?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item eleven.
Vice Mayor and Council, uh, our city attorney has advised us that we really don't have the flexibility to make the proposed adjustment to the Board of Adjustment, so would, uh, ask that the council strike the item.
Make a motion to restrike the item?
Second.
Okay, call for the vote, please.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item is stricken. Item twelve, consider approval of ordinance number nine-nine-three dash two-one, amending Part twelve, Chapter five, Article K, Section twelve dash six-one-six, by adding commercial collector streets as allowable expenditure of transportation impact fee funds.
Vice Mayor and Council, the proposed change to this ordinance is to allow us to go transportation impact fee to address some of these, uh, commercial collector streets like we just, uh, did at the Shops of Moore. We've got, uh, two or three others around the city that we may ultimately have to, uh, address, and, and this would come into play when we have multiple ownership, and it's a situation where everyone's in charge and no one's in charge. And so, to get everything, to get anything done, the, the city just needs to step in. So, uh, be happy to answer any questions, recommend approval.
Motion to approve? Second.
And just one quick question, Brooks. When these, uh, you know, existing developments, there may not be a lot we can do, but if something new comes in, are there things that we can do to ensure maybe there's not as much confusion on some of these shared? Oh, yes, we're, uh, uh, our, our process is much better now.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item thirteen, consider approving change order number three with Crossland Construction Company for an increase in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars the city share to the contract for various building materials that increased after the bid and before the contract executed date for the public works maintenance facility.
Vice Mayor and Council, uh, a bid opening was held on June second for the public works facility, and, uh, because of the, uh, high cost of, uh, construction at the time of the bid opening, we did go through the value engineering, uh, with the low, uh, construction contractor. And, uh, as a result, um, and then once we awarded the contract in July, and then the contract was signed in August. So, during that period, um, the contractor did experience some price increases between the time the contract was signed and when the bid was actually, uh, held. And, uh, uh, the total cost of those increases were thirty-two thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars, and, uh, we've, we recommend that we would go ahead and pay for fifteen thousand dollars of those as a partnership with the construction contractor.
Would we have had the same cost if we went with another contractor, do you think?
Same types of increases. I think we would have seen the similar type cost increases, yes.
Okay, so that's still, that keeps them as the lowest bidder?
Oh, yes, yeah, they're the low bidder by quite a bit.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item fourteen, consider approving change order number four with Crossland Construction Company for a decrease in the amount of six thousand, three-hundred-and-four dollars to the contract for revisions to the metal wall panel at both ends of the C and G building for the public works maintenance facility project.
As we indicated earlier, uh, in past change order discussions and contract constructions, we're always looking at some ways that we can try to reduce the cost for the construction of the public works facility. And one of those is, um, uh, because of the, it's a C and G facility, we would need to have had ventilation through the roof material of the, uh, cover material for our C and G trucks. And so, what we decided to do was to go ahead and just basically have a, uh, open in, ends on each side of the, of the facility that houses all of the trucks, as well as about a three-foot, eight-inch opening on the backside, which would provide the ventilation that's required for, for a C and G facility. And as a result of that, we're able to save, uh, the six thousand, three-hundred-and-four dollars in, in material for the, uh, structure. And we'd recommend that we approve it.
Make a motion to reapprove?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Mel, uh, Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item fifteen, consider adoption of resolution number five dash twenty-one, allowing the Oklahoma Department of Transportation to modify the I thirty-five speed limit through Moore from seventy miles per hour to sixty-five miles per hour.
Vice Mayor and Council, this was a request from ODOT to make the speed limit more uniform throughout the I thirty-five corridor through, uh, South Oklahoma City, Moore Norman, recommend approval.
About the same thing, I'm like, this is not a popular topic.
Didn't say I liked it.
Didn't say I'm voting for it.
Make a motion to approve the change.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Nope.
Call for the vote, please.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item sixteen, consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of six in-car video systems in the amount of thirty-six thousand, fifty-five dollars from Computer Tech International, doing business as watchdog for new Ford Explorer SUV police interceptors from the United States General Services Administration, G S A, contract pursuant to Part seven, Section seven dash two-oh-five dash six.
Vice Mayor and Council, uh, this is a budgeted purchase of camera systems for our previously approved replacement police vehicles for this fiscal year. The camera systems include two outward-facing cameras and one camera that covers the inner compartment, which is all standard in our police vehicles here in Moore, but recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item seventeen, consider the budgeted purchase of interior and exterior parts for six new Ford Explorer SUV police interceptors in the amount of thirty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars from Fleet Safety Equipment Incorporated, doing business as Dana Safety Supply, as the lowest of three written quotes.
Vice Mayor and Council, this, uh, also is a budgeted purchase of various accoutrements and safety equipment for previously approved replacement police, police vehicles for this fiscal year, recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Was that you, Mark, that made the motion?
It's Mark, yeah.
Okay. Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item eighteen, discuss and consider if deemed appropriate, authorize the city manager to vote for the allocation proposal for assessment three in regard to the Diaz Refinery.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is the, uh, latest chapter in the, what appears to be never-ending saga of the Diaz Refinery. I think it was several, maybe a couple of years ago, uh, the same type of, uh, situation arose with the council. Thirty-some years ago, it was, uh, determined that the City of Moore and other entities in state of Oklahoma transferred their waste, oil, petroleum waste, uh, to the Diaz Refinery. And, uh, it became one of those, uh, federal government superfund sites and cleanup sites. City of Moore was assessed, uh, an amount of money to begin with based upon estimates that were arrived at, at the time, uh, as to the amount of waste that the city had deposited. And then, depending upon how much each generator put into the system, they were assessed a certain amount of the cost of the cleanup. Everybody paid into it, and at the time, there was, uh, an understanding of, uh, oh, yeah, this is all you're gonna have to pay, we've got plenty, we'll get it cleaned up with the amount that everybody's put into it. Well, they found out that that really didn't happen. And, uh, so every once in a while, they come back to the, uh, generators, uh, to contribute a little extra money towards the cleanup. I think, uh, in this, uh, our contribution on this would be a thousand dollars, uh, which, you know, a thousand dollars is a thousand dollars, but in the scheme of things, uh, it's not a lot.
Is there a date, or is this the last transaction? How do we close this out so it doesn't keep happening forever, or will we be able to?
I have no idea. Once we get, once we get a, uh, clean bill of health, everybody gets a clean bill of health and it's all cleaned up, that's when it ends. But I cannot give you, it, it, you know, the intent, of course, was that it be cleaned up and done by now, you know? But, uh, it was supposed to be, I think, at twenty-five. They figured maybe twenty-five-year cleanup and process to clean all the dirt and everything that was there, dispose of it. But every once in a while, they hit up all the generators again for their contribution and, uh, so I said way back when, when they did the agreement, uh, it was all kinda based on nobody really knowing how much each individual put in there, but they ranked them on, uh, the, uh, generators. And we were low, uh, which is why we're a thousand dollars and, and not more.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Well, just, uh, just to make the council aware that, uh, the last time we came to the council with this, the, the bill was about a thousand dollars also. So, as Randy said, we are one of the smaller generators, and so while we're not sure how many more thousand-dollar bills may come our way, they're not increasing the increment or anything like that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes, item passes. Item nineteen, consider approval of a budget supplement to budget funds and related expenses for two new vehicles for the fire department from the half-cent sales tax fund.
Vice Mayor and Council, this amendment will allow the fire department to utilize available funds from fiscal year twenty-one's half-cent sales tax to replace two older vehicles with new ones. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
So, in a future meeting, will we approve the purchase of those vehicles?
Yes, ma'am, I believe probably at the next. Yes, ma'am, I believe probably at the next meeting.
Okay, make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item 20 is a consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held October 18th, 2021. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2021, 2022 in the amount of $877,581.52.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, it's a consent docket, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item 21 is a consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held October 18th, 2021. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2021, 2022 in the amount of $177,565.47.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, call for the vote, please.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting, let the record show that all members that were present before are still present. Item 22 is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda, I don't, nobody signed up, would anybody care to speak?
You guys didn't prepare your speeches?
Yeah.
Kim's standing, I think she wants to say something. Oh, I was just, I thought, I thought.
We had, we had city staff spend a lot of time in preparation to make presentations at the station earlier this afternoon, so I think it's only fair that leadership in Moore get up and make, they're also professors.
Okay, item B is items from the city council or city trustees?
I'd say the shops at Moore looks fantastic, and finished how many weeks ahead of schedule? Because I thought we were well into November when we anticipated.
Two or three.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was very concerned about how far it was going to be, and we finished.
Not me, I knew they had it under control.
Yeah, yeah, I was still worried, and then I wanted to just thank you to Chief Gibson and the team, I noticed in a couple of neighborhoods last night, police going through very slowly and very cautiously, but yeah, we had a lot of, a lot of supervision, and it was great turnout for trick-or-treating, not only at Old Town, but then on Sunday night as well.
Very good, and I have a couple, just a couple of quick things on reference ACOG meetings. When I agreed to be the city's representative, which I've done for a number of years, and I'm glad to do it, but since then, my employer has changed, I don't have quite the flexibility that I had with my schedule then, so that's where I need help from all the council, no, Danielle, Melissa have been able to attend, and so the next meeting, and I need help with these next two meetings, I guess is the point that I'm getting, so if you, Jason, Louis, Adam, if y'all could look at your calendars, November 18th and December 19th are the next ACOG meetings, they start at 1 o'clock, and if you have availability, just probably let Brooks know, and I'll-
December 9th, you said?
December, November 18th and December 19th, because of the holidays, they're different.
The 19th is a Sunday.
Okay, I'll have to, it'll be that Thursday.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll double check.
I could probably do the December one, I can't do the November one.
Okay, well anyways, just if you can do them, let me know, so we can, we didn't have anybody there at last meeting, and it just kinda puts them in a jam, and I just need your help, so if y'all could look at that. Also, Jason sent me a text telling me that he is immune to most speed limit laws anyway, so it doesn't affect him.
(laughing). I was like, what?
Okay, anyone else?
No.
Item C, items from the city manager, trust manager.
Yes, several things. On this Thursday will be our final town hall meeting at Oak Ridge Elementary for the election on November 9th, would encourage anyone to attend that would like some more information about it, also, information is available on our website, so that's another, another source. Our election is November the 9th, would encourage residents to go out and vote, I believe that we have a very good track record of responsibly, financially responsibly addressing the infrastructure in the City of Moore, and these projects, if passed, would do the same thing. Would like to congratulate Sergeant Mikel Washington for his generosity towards a young man that works at the Crest, there was a TV spot done on him about 10 days ago, and so, and, you know, not only congratulations to him, but to other police and firemen that also do similar things, they just didn't happen to make the news. And then our field work for our audit has been completed, so the report should probably be presented to council if not the next meeting, then on December the 6th, and so would like to congratulate Betty Kane and her staff for all of their hard work, because I think this is a record as far as getting it done early, that's all I got.
All right, item 23, executive session, section 307, Title 25 Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet in an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss, consider, and if deemed appropriate, consider taking possible action regarding pending claim by William Ford against the City of Moore, and authorize legal counsel and staff to take action as necessary and appropriate in the interest of the city as authorized by, authorized by 25 statute Oklahoma 307B4.
Make a motion we convene to executive session? Second.
Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, we are in recess.
Okay, two seconds, everybody stand up. (laughing).
Congratulations.
Who forgot? I guess I'll stay.
Y'all should get a, come up, when we leave, come up here and get a better picture.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and go, and then come get a better picture.
Jason's gonna stay for the picture. Oh, are you part of the issue? No. That's what I thought, I was like. (inaudible).[1237.41]